Welcome, welcome, welcome to Basketball Heads Live. I'm your host Glenn Pooh Harding. And today, we are doing it at a special time. Three o'clock on your eastern dial. Today's special guest is, well, y'all figured out in a minute, because it's a special guest. This basketball head is a three-term District 41 City Council member that has been reshaping Brooklyn landscape along the way. As well as being a politician, she is a basketball head at heart. A former basketball coach with the Fall Community. She coached the eight ball, the Iron Man Tournament, and the Flatbush Youth Community. We are going to talk about our coaching days. Of course, we got to touch on the remodeling of the legendary Brevort Coliseum Basketball Court. Excuse me. And this year's upcoming election, which is tomorrow. Tomorrow's upcoming election. Who you gonna vote for? Well, let's get out to the polls and show our support. I'm taking questions as usual. So, without further ado, help me welcome to the show, three-term City Council member Darlene Millie. Y'all ready? Hello there.
Hello, how are you?
I'm doing well, awesome, awesome as usual. Blessed and highly favored.
I agree with that.
Yes, 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 definitely. Well, I'm glad you could join us on Basketball Heads. As usual, we like to talk basketball. But you know, tomorrow's a big day for you. So, we thought we'd give you an opportunity to be heard.
Wow, thank you. It is tomorrow's primary day, June 22nd. So many people are running, so many offices are at stake. Our future really is at stake. So, I just want to thank everyone, y'all basketball heads, to be in here today. But I'm a basketball head.
Yeah, yeah. And what I like to ask all my guests is, who introduced you to the game of basketball?
Guess what? Nobody introduced me to it. When I was in high school, I just wanted to keep myself busy. I said, the more things I did, the less things I could get into. And at that time, you know, people was young. One of my friends was pregnant at 17. And so, I just made sure I stayed myself occupied. Had joined a girls' basketball team, the tennis team, the track team. I was an All-American.
Oh, what's your community?
And then went to college playing basketball, BMCC.
Alright, so we gonna get there, we gonna get there. Because I didn't know all this information.
Ah, yes.
I just thought you was a community coach. This is awesome. What waterpoint are you from?
Beaufort-Stuyvesant. I lived there practically all my life, right across from Brevort. The Coliseum was there, but it was four girls. My mother didn't let us out that much. But whenever we went into the Coliseum, we towed up and then we disappeared. And they say, where those girls at? We won't come out there four months later.
Right, right.
But it was awesome. And that's Thomas Diggs.
Yes, yes, definitely.
And the Montgomery family, the Johnson family.
Yeah.
That really, you know, had the community as a one united front. And that's what I'm trying to bring back in Bethsi. At the Coliseum, we're gonna rename the Coliseum Thomas Diggs. And to bring that Coliseum back to its original art. That's what I want to do. Plus, we're gonna need people to help us.
As a youngster, I was blessed to take part in the same day when Sonny Lewis had the reins there. So, definitely.
That's good. Now, that's exciting. And I think about, people are saying that our kids are doing this and doing that. But if we don't have any facilities, resources, that our young people could work and play, they will be out in the street. But now, even in Betsy Head, I did it five years ago. I put $20 million to put a dome, Betsy Head Park in Brownsville. To me, if we really about saving lives, all elected officials need to invest in that. That we can have our children start Olympics. They could be, um, ballerina, basketball, soccer, football, and a safe haven for the community.
Definitely, definitely. So, who are some of the biggest influences in your life coming up?
Bernard, New York Knicks. That's the only one I like, wow. And John Starks was, woo, he was phenomenal. Maybe because his name is easy. But that's all I thought about. Bernard and Starks.
Okay, well, outside of that, like inside your home, you know, in the community, who was those people that, you know, that played an influential role in your life and you coming up?
This is, um, excuse me, I can say, this is a young lady in the community that is still in the community to this day, Janie L. Bradley. She's my CPA also. She had the CPA in the community Fulton and Utica.
Yes, I've been there, I've used that place, yes, I know, yes.
She know me all my life. I used to sit on Herkema Street, watch her come from Wall Street. Her hair bouncing, her briefcase. And then she'd come right back out and go to the park, St. Benedict's. That's right across the street from Brevort. And she'd go in the park and tear those men up. Basketball, yes. Yes, you should interview her.
Oh, I definitely would. And I will go back and reintroduce myself and let her know that we spoke.
That's it, that's it. She's the one, and I said, wow, I want to be that, the same way. Go to work girly girly and then get out there and play basketball and tear the men up. And that has happened numerous times. I remember I played someone in Kingsborough, one-on-one. And I was beating him, a big guy. And he knocked me down so hard and everybody said, oh, that's it. Because he knew I was gonna win the game. I'm that good.
Okay, well, I think it's important for people like yourself, you know, myself, professionals to be seen in the neighborhood, you know? So, people can have models, other models to see and...
Oh, my goodness. You said, do you know I saw you Saturday? I was driving on Lafayette. I said, hey, hey, I saw that boy. And that's what, you just said something so phenomenal. I think about, I never bump into a lot of the elected officials at all in the neighborhood. They see me at certain place saying, what you doing here? But I feel I have to keep my finger on the pulse, that I know who is who, what is what, how I can relate to everyone, that if a need come, I can help them. So, that's why I feel I'm still in the neighborhood, I never left. So, I don't understand, even with the police, if they lived in the area they serve, our community would be much better and stronger.
Definitely, definitely, I say that.
You said a phenomenal thing.
Yeah, I was going, I was actually going to spend some time with my little cousin.
And you had a young man with you too.
Yes, yes. So, that's my little cousin who I'm mentoring and, you know, helping try to go and put him in the right direction, on the right track, so.
That's good, keep a hold to them young.
Yeah, we gotta do that.
I appreciate you, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, let's talk about, you know, you playing high school basketball, right?
Oh, yes.
And that very first game, what was that feeling like? What was those emotions like?
It's, I still get those emotions right now when I have to speak. So, imagine the basketball games was phenomenal. I was a point guard, so I was really...
You was the leader, you was the leader at heart, you was the leader from the beginning.
I was really fast. And guess what? We started a women's basketball team in New York City Transit, and I was the coach.
Really?
Yes, player, coach, I played also.
Alright, let's put this out there. What high school did you play for?
Well, high school, John, 271, John Conan, right there on Herkema Streets.
Yes, yes, wow.
Then I went to BMCC College, Wingate High School, then BMCC.
So, Wingate, Wingate was the high school. The quick, uh, Jackie, uh, give me wrong, um, he played, excuse me. Don't get me wrong.
Wingate.
Jackie Jackson, I think it is, jumping Jackie Jackson.
I don't recall that name.
Listen, I'm going way past your days. He played Kansas County Hawkins. He was a superstar back then. So, I make those connections. And Bernard Harding went there as well.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. Thank you, but I couldn't remember it, but you got it. Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I wondered how, I always think back, how did Thomas Diggs do the first Olympics? I guess he did the World Series.
It was the Midget League, it was the Midget League.
Midget League. So, I imagine he was way above.
What happened was, as the Sonny Lewis Tournament was kind of, you know, dying down and a lot of us was kind of transitioning or leaving, going to college, right? So, like, it was like that next gap of kids who was coming up, who Sonny Lewis didn't service. Because we was on to the high school level. So, like, his sons, they were like younger, so they needed a place to play. And there was a need. And what Thomas Diggs did, he provided that need for his children and the kids in the community to have a safe haven to play. And that was the Brevort Midget League, which is legendary. Yeah?
So, I'm really throwing it out to the universe. How can we bring that back to its glory? I know we gonna try to change, we gonna change the name to Thomas Diggs Arena. But we need creative thoughts and building, how we gonna keep and remodel it also? We gotta remodel it properly, that everyone could be in there safely and that we could use it more than just, you know, for the summer. That's what I'm looking for, a planning group to really see how we can utilize that. And we need live and strong people in the neighborhood that have the community best interests at heart, to be a part of that whole group of being the referees, just keeping the park clean, keeping the arena, renting it out to other people. Let's bring stars in. We need all of that. And it takes every last one of us, not just a handful. We thank God for Thomas Diggs, but we need more Thomas Diggs. Thomas Diggs and you, me, and...
I'll say this, not to toke my horn, but, uh,
Uh-oh.
I've been in Brevort for a long time, my family's been here. Um, and I did my due diligence to help to get them out of here. But I'm still here, the community knows me. Um, you got guys like Kenny Patterson, who is in the neighborhood, right? You got, uh, Amy, uh, Angel, um,
Brown.
Brady, you got a lot of people that's still in the neighborhood. But I'm saying this, I can speak for myself, as being an educator for over 20 years, a basketball coach, throw my name in the hat, and I'll be down to support anything I have to do with helping build in Brevort.
Thank you, and you know I was a coach also to the basketball team.
I know, listen, I always tell, I coached against you, trust me. And I will always kind of remind you that, like, you don't remember, I used to coach against you, you know? So, and then you came a politician, and then we would see each other, you know, every now and again.
Just frankly. And imagine, I didn't know the rules of basketball, but I just knew I wanted our youth to off the streets. And I started, I had about five community gardens. So, I would have them help me clean the garden, then we'd go play basketball, practice, and then we have a game, and then they'd come back and I have to feed them at the garden. And sometime, we couldn't even find some of the parents. It was like I had extended children. So, no matter what, we instill, if you can't say anything good, don't say anything at all. Every first Saturday of the month, you had to do Money Smart program. That mean you had to learn how to budget your money. Instead of going to the corner bodega, go buy a half a thing of eggs, cook it yourself and buy bread. You save so much money. One young man had credit cards already at 16 years old. He got rid of his credit card, started saving his money. We open bank accounts, that's what is needed. More of that, to let our children know, you don't have to work for someone, be an entrepreneur, your own boss. And that's what I'm instilling in young people right now. And on a bigger scale, I believe you and I can do it even bigger.
Oh, for sure, definitely, definitely. I've been talking to Coach Ray Haskins on the side. He's the godfather of basketball head.
Wow.
You know, you gotta keep the community connected. He's someone who was a mentor to all of us coming up and someone who I lean on too for the history of New York City and the things that we need to do. So, he gave me a few questions he would like me to ask you.
Okay.
Okay, so, he liked to say, first of all, he would like to credit you on your incredible job you did during your first tenure.
Thank you, thank you.
So, we definitely want to give you a round of applause for that right there, alright? Definitely let that go, yeah, yeah, we do that right here live.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate it.
No doubt, no doubt. So, his first question was, can schools remain open during the evenings?
Yes.
Yeah.
They should be open. Uh, if you, the previous administration, I gotta say his name, Heinz. The, I always felt that Manhattan, Cy Vance was the DA in Manhattan. Whenever they did drug busts, they would take that money and put it in their gymnasiums that the kids in that area could be there all night, to 12 o'clock at night. And when I asked that for our Brooklyn DA, the meeting will be over. And I mean, you could check the record on that. I felt that if we open up the schools, the gymnasium, all the youth centers, and have reliable and strong individuals running it, that the community respect and know and reverence what they say. And even in the process of molding the young men and women, I feel they should stay open to 12, to 12 at night. Even sometime, it should be later for the adults. Yes, that's on my agenda.
That, that was one of the things that helped keep me, kept me out of trouble as a youngster and a lot of other young men who used that as a...
Exactly, but imagine what our young people going through right now. It's nothing, nothing.
But their phones and a lot of trouble to get into, you know?
Even with that, they, it's causing riots and shootings just over the phone.
Yes.
I'm waiting for the next question.
We call it, we call it the devil's playground.
Yes.
Alright, so, he said, he also wanted to know, if the Parks Department can assign a recreation person year-round, that person will be a resource for information similar to the 311 operator, to the people in the community? Would it find help, jobs, and would it go for medical assistance?
Yes, oh, the Parks Department. We gotta really work on them, because I just went through a lot of stuff with the parks. Um, during, since the pandemic was over, I put in permits early. And all of a sudden, as it got closer to the political deadlines, all of a sudden, it came unavailable. So, I just feel that we should have a liaison from the parks that we would know exactly who is on the calendar, where if we look at that calendar, we could participate. I had something, a big skating thing on June 19th, on Juneteenth. And they said it wasn't available, but guess what? We went there anyway, and we had a big roller skating event, so. So, we definitely need that. That will hold the Parks Department accountable and it'll let the community know what's going on in our parks. Those parks are ours.
Definitely.
Yes, I love that. I love that, thank you.
Alright, definitely, and salute to Coach Ray Haskins. Um, one thing I wanted to know is, uh, what are your plans for affordable housing and after-school program for teens and young parents?
Wow, the after-school programs is number one. But the, um, parents, I think we need entrepreneurship programs with the small business services. I think that's gonna be the key of recovery from COVID also. And the affordable housing, that's the one thing, I hope people really check my record and see every, all the housing in my district, the 41st District, is the last district that have land left in the whole city. And I'm trying to make, yeah, I'm trying to make sure it's balanced. You can do affordable housing, and then you can do, um, you can do condominiums, because that's home ownership.
Yeah.
And I, and I will partner with the federal government to make sure that we get those housing back. And to just check my record, I was not elected official at the time. If you go on Atlantic Avenue between Buffalo and Schenectady, it's affordable housing there right now, with one-bedroom apartment, $550, two-bedroom apartment, $700, three-bedroom apartment, $975 to this day. And I did that eight years ago. So, that's what kind of affordable housing I will be putting in. I don't mind, um, some of the developments being mixed-use, because sometime, if someone is living next door to you making $150,000 and you making $30,000, y'all could grow together. And that's building a community. Thank you.
That's awesome, that's awesome, that's awesome. So, now, the biggest question is, why should people come out and vote for you? All the things that you did, you named some incredible things that you have done. Um, I know I have a resident, I'm not gonna name, who knew that she was coming on the show today, and they wanted me to ask, why should the people in Brevort vote for you when they felt like, you know, you came by, you played some music, and did some barbecues? And I was like, wow. And this the person is a senior, so I had to put it in.
Yes, what do you mean? Um, why should they vote for me just because I did barbecues? I just did a senior event out of my own pocket, it's not... To me, when you get, when you vote for me, you voting for someone that's gonna help the average, everyday man and woman. Whatever I did, I did it for the community. I would sit at the table with the speaker, Mayor Bloomberg, he's number one, with congestion pricing. I said, no, only had 12% of my district that drove to Manhattan. And guess what? That 12% meant so much to me, that they invited me to Gracie Mansion, and we, you're arguing at each other. I said, if you start charging people to go over the Brooklyn Bridge, going to work, and to pay coming back, or to go over to the Manhattan Bridge and come back, that, that 12% could be without a job soon. Because their livelihood is driving a car over that bridge. So, congestion pricing did not go through, because they needed my vote. And I did not vote for it, and I'm not ashamed of that right now. They trying to do it again, but we as constituents have to be involved, go to those community boards, meetings, and demand that we don't need congestion pricing. Imagine our young people get a brand-new car, what? They just barely have enough money to put in their gas tank. But then they gotta pay a toll to go over the Brooklyn Bridge and come back. And a vote for me is a vote for yourself. You will bump into the grocery market with me, you'll bump into the laundromat with me, and I can handle your issues right then and there. And sometime, I asked them, I said, alright, if it's too complicated, I asked them to come to my office. And I wanna, we had a debate, me and my opponent. And I said, if you could just downgrade someone, I said, I'm not gonna go low, I'm gonna go high. I talk about what I've done, what I'm gonna continue doing. And one of the people in the audience said, her sign was off the, um, the office, but she never left. We didn't have enough money to get another sign. But once I was turned out, I wasn't beat out, I was turned out, I felt it was important for me to still handle the community constituent service. I'm still the female district leader of the 55th Assembly District. I appoint Supreme Court judges, Civil Court judges, and Syracuse judges. And I appoint everyone who worked in the 55th Assembly District, all the polling jobs. Right now, a lot of our constituents are making $3,000 for nine days. So, I feel if you go vote for me, you'll be voting for yourself. I'm the average-day man and woman, but I'm elected official, I'm not a politician, I'm a servant of the people. I try to do all I can to make our lives better, because I haven't left the neighborhood. Whatever affects them, affects me. And that's why I know, vote for me as your number-one choice.
That's, that's, that was honest. And you can say, I'm bringing the Thomas Diggs Court to life.
To life.
He thing right there, right? Because in the last 25 years, no one have done anything.
I noticed that.
If that is something that you plan to do, everyone in Brevort should come out and just plug their vote.
Yeah, but can I tell you something? I'm a, from my mouth to your ears, I know the political establishment may hate me. I tried it with the Democrats all this time. I put $20 million in Betsy Head to save people and our community. Nobody else want to put money into it. But if I have to cross the border to the Republicans or any, anyone who willing to help us make this dream come true, I'm gonna do it. Because it's not about me, it's not about a party, it's about saving the community and building something that we can have a safe haven, that our children do not be, become a pipeline to public school to jail, period.
And let me second that, that's so true. And I don't think the people will care which party, as long as we still know the face and the person.
Exactly, and I'm telling you...
Doing what they need to do.
I have tried so much, so now I have to go a little deeper now. And, and the best thing is to make sure you get something that is right for your district, but you could look yourself in the mirror the next morning, my heart is good. And I hope Brevort know, and the whole district know. I don't do things for form or fashion or to be seen, because I tell you truth, I do more events than any elected official out here. And half of it is out of my own pocket. And I don't get the accolades, I don't need it. But long as I know the people are watching me, they see me, I'm helping them, they helping me, just saying, go girl, I got you. So, I'm okay with it. And I just hope that our people vote me number-one choice, that's it.
Definitely, and they should, because we have former basketball players like Robert Cardigan, who played in Brevort, who would not go over there and speak. Oh, Mel, but Mel Davis was on the show, and then he came down and he met with you. So, that's action right there.
Action.
Okay?
And we heard it from his mouth.
Not about the talking, that's it.
That's what, and I'm not a talker. When Mel Davis, he even endorsed me. And do you know, I prayed, when I said, why did he chose me? He don't know me. But he checked my record and saw that everybody is, nobody is really endorsing me, but the people are endorsing me. But he said, I want to help her. And, and once she get in there, we're gonna do the Thomas Diggs Arena and make it back to its full capacity, and he's gonna help me on it. Mel Davis, I thank you, I'm looking forward.
No doubt, no doubt. Well, we don't gonna keep you here too long, we just getting to our point, we do our top five, alright? Top five, top five, top five. Okay, Ms. Darlene Millie, give me your top five music artists of all time.
Really? Oh, God.
Top five, top five, think about it.
Top five, oh my God. Uh, Beyonce.
Woo, Beyonce, alright.
Um, uh, Jill Scott.
Woo, okay.
Um, Shakira, no, um, Alicia Keys.
Alicia Keys. Hey, one more, one more?
Oh, one more, um, oh my God, John Legend.
John Legend, John Legend. Alright, so, if you had to pick a dream team of politicians, it could be past president?
Dolly Rangel, Percy Sunnell, Percy Sunnell.
That's right.
David Dinkins, um, uh, who else? Um, oh God, the five, you know the five in Harlem. And I gotta say, um, uh, the one in Brooklyn, Thomas Fortune.
Yes.
A Bethsi, Unity Democratic Club.
Yes, definitely, definitely. Yes, definitely, definitely. Yes, yes. Let me tell you. Was that the Democratic Club on Ralph Avenue?
Yes, I have that club now. I, three clubs, I, I combined them into one.
Let me tell you, when I played for the Renegades and Coach Briggs, back in the days, right? We went twenty-one and oh, we, we had a great season, and that propelled me to play at Lincoln going into my freshman year. Those values and those things that we learned back then, that club was our home. We got practice, we got our dress there, we got ready for our games there, we had our meetings there. So that Democratic Club was a pillar of the community in the early eighties, that don't get young men like myself.
Yes, that's good. Well, we still thriving, that's the same way we have it on Utica now, Utica and Union. We have three thousand square feet, we let the community us- utilize it. Every Friday, we call it chuchat and chill. A fish fry, game night.
I, I'ma come by one of these Friday.
Yes, yes. We got the women are still, uh, one of her, uh, young girls are in a women's basketball team, playing abroad. So we, we try to raise money that they can have, to have money in their pocket, that we don't have to have our young people being compromised by not having money. So that's what a community is all about, and a political club. Wait till I win, you'll see what we really do when we get some money.
Listen, trust me, I, I, I'ma be behind you a hundred percent. I like some of the things that you're doing, uh, definitely the Breeport Coliseum, and actually putting it to action. Um, Thomas Diggs deserved this, he done a lot for our community, and, uh, salute to him and his family. And thank you for coming on the show, we appreciate you.
Thank you for having me here, and the best is yet to come. And I'm Darlene Millie, your number one choice.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Alright, alright. Thank you, darling, for coming on the show.
Okay.
I'm your host, Glenn Pooh Harding, and you've been watching Basketball Heads. The official home for New York City basketball, and now politics, right? Darlene Millie breaking into the show, and my guy, Kahari Edwards up here. For the new politicians, to the seasoned politicians.
Thank you.
To everybody out there in basketball headland, I'm saying peace.
Peace and thank you.
Yes.
Alright.